Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming out this evening and joining us for our monthly meeting of the Board of Education. It is Monday, October 25th, 2021. It is 6:05 PM. Apologize for starting a few minutes late. Let the record show that all board members are present except for Mr. Cook and Mr. Welker. Um...
Ah!
I agree. If you will, please rise and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bear with me for just a moment. One of the board members is not here, asked to join online. Hey, Casey. This is Kyle.
Hey, sir. Yes, sir.
Sorry about that. We're starting a little bit late. We just did the Pledge of Allegiance and roll call, so I just wanted to dial you in.
Very sorry. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, sorry about that. All right. A word before each of us. We have an agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Jeff and Jared, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved. First up this evening, we have our recognitions. Dr. Glass.
Yeah, we have our terrific Tigers tonight. Welcome to the school board meeting. We're pleased to recognize our October terrific Tigers. These are students from each of our buildings that have been selected, received this award based on their service to others, their leadership, and their scholarship. We'd also like to recognize the parents for all that they do. So as we call each student forward, we would like to ask them to stand to be recognized as well.
Jared. Jared. Who we have first?
We start with Alma Schrader. Everybody to the room. So we can go down.
Go down. All right.
Alma Schrader, we have Leah Bennett, third grade daughter of Emily and Eric Bennett. Leah is an all-around outstanding student in person. Academically, she works hard on everything she does and always gives her best effort. Leah is generally a caring and kind individual to everyone and regularly goes out of her way to help her peers and the staff members. She is an excellent leader and good example to all. Leah's good character shines through as an inspiration to others. Well done, Leah.
And Blaintry Elementary, we have Willow Rieger, third grade daughter of Wendy and
Chris Rieger. Willow is always there for her classmates to lend a helping hand. She is respectful, kind to others, responsible, has a positive attitude toward learning, and always gives 100% in her schoolwork. She is an outstanding role model for her peers and is always trying to better herself in the classroom. Great job, Willow. Clipford Elementary, we have Bryce Lawson, fourth grade son of Ashley and David Lawson. Bryce is a great example of how to be a safe, respectful, and responsible at Clipford. He works hard and never gives up. Bryce always shows his peers how to be an excellent friend. Bryce can always be counted on to follow expectations or to lend a helping hand. Way to go, Bryce. At Franklin Elementary, we have Jade Mosley, third grade daughter of Ashley Fout. Jade is a kind young lady who is respectful to everyone she encounters. We'll go and read it anyways. She's always willing to lend a helping hand when needed. Jade can always be counted on to do the right thing every single day. She is truly an amazing student and friend. Good job, Jade. At Jefferson Elementary, we have Dalton Noel, fourth grade son of Rebecca and Raymond Noel. Dalton is a hard-working student who gives his all each and every day. He excels in math and is always contributing to our class discussions. Dalton also works extremely hard in reading and is always volunteering to read out loud in the classroom. Dalton shows his amazing character to his peers every day. He's a good friend and kind to others. Dalton's always the terrific Tiger. Always a positive. At Central Middle School, we have Lila Patton-Gill, sixth grade daughter of Jessica and Justin Patton-Gill. Lila is a very respectful, responsible, and inspiring student who demonstrates the ability to care for her teammates and go in and out of the classroom. She is definitely, she can definitely be counted on to do the right thing even when no one is looking. We are glad to have Lila as our roaring Tiger for the month of October. In Central Junior High School, we have Eileen Wilson. Is that right? We'll see Eileen next month. Central High School, we have Sophia Satt, 12th grade daughter of Sylvia and Randy Satt. Sophia is a reliable, self-motivated, and an overall hard worker who generally cares about the quality of work she does. She exhibits exemplary behavior in and out of school. She is a star student athlete who manages coursework while dedicating time to extracurricular activities. Way to go, Sophia. And at Central Academy, we have Chastity Garcia, 10th grade daughter of Jonathan Ayers Sr.
Not here.
Not here. We'll see her next month.
All right.
Group shot from September. We have any Jefferson Central Junior High or High School from September?
High School.
High School. We have Samuel Wang, 12th grade son of Min Xiao and Xiong Wang. Samuel has a mathematical mind unlike any that I've ever had the pleasure to know. But even with that, he is humble, unassuming, and has a quick wit that makes him not only a genius but a likable one. Samuel is a pleasure to have in our school. Congratulations, Samuel.
They get group photo. All right. Yeah, we're right here. There you go. Three, four, five. You want to go ahead and take a picture? Any girls who want to get pictures, come up. They're already escaping.
I think the kids steal the show.
Randy, as it should be. So next up on our agenda, we have information proposals or comments from the audience. And first up, we have somebody here from Central Academy to talk about the new yearbook. Dr. Glass?
Yeah, Brianna Dewitt.
So I wish I had all 13 of my students here today, but most of them are working, so that's super unfortunate because they would have thought this was cool. They would be sweaty, but they think it was cool. So I just wanted to say thank you so much for all the support that we've got from the community. We're doing awesome stuff. If you're not aware of it, Chandler's going to say a couple of things to you and give you a letter so you're even more aware of what we're doing. And just, we wanted to give a shout out to the foundation. Like, we would not have raised nearly as much money as we have, and I would not even know what to do without Amy. So the foundation's doing awesome. They're doing good things in our school. The kids are rocking it. Imagine there's 13 if we're here and not just one. But Chandler wanted to say a couple of things.
Okay. Hi, I'm Chandler Farless. I'm the yearbook editor. Thank you guys so much for your time tonight. I just wanted to take this time, uh, opportunity to ask you to consider supporting yearbook. I'm going to send you guys home with a letter about yearbook. This is our first yearbook, by the way. We've never had one, so yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jared.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go give it to all the other people. That was it. So thank you so much, guys. Keep following us. It's the first yearbook. Our students haven't had one before. And I mean, we have some students who start in our building in sixth grade, so just imagine, like, being in sixth grade, going to school for six years and never being in a yearbook. Like, you have nothing to reflect on. Where's all those positive memories? So it's awesome. Like, it's going to be so cool if they were filling it. So yeah, thank you so much for your time.
When will the yearbook come out?
Um, so it'll, we'll do just like the high school. So graduation will be in it. So they'll probably get it like first, second week of August.
Okay.
And if you want to buy one, you can buy one for you.
Well, congratulations on the first year, and we look forward to seeing that. Great. And then next up, we have requests from community members. So I believe we have five individuals that wish to speak this evening, and I'll call you in no particular order, but just wanted to remind you that you have three minutes to talk about whatever your topic is, and I'll have a timer set. And I'd ask that you just be respectful of that time limit so everyone has the equal amount of time. First up this evening, we have Martha Hamilton. There she is. Good evening.
Good evening. I think fall is here. First of all, I want everyone to understand that I realize that COVID-19 is a serious health threat for the United States that has been in any of our lifetimes, I believe. I don't think anyone was around in 1918. And currently, there have been vaccinations being done, and I know that many experts are advising for that and many experts are advising against vaccines. Currently, there have been over 818,000 adverse effects, according to VAERS, which is the Vaccine Adverse Reaction website, and of those, there were 17,000-plus deaths. So I want to thank the Board of Education members for everything and the administrators for everything that you've done. This is a very stressful time for all of you, all of us, and especially parents and grandparents with children in schools. I know that you've recently taken away the mask requirement, and I think that is a great start in a good direction. I'm not here to talk about emotions. None of us need to go there. I think everything that we do needs to be based on science and on facts and not on something that we've heard or read that is from a trusted, doesn't matter if it's media or a particular government agency. I think all decisions should be made locally, and I would hope that everyone does research so that they're aware of different positions with this. I have a list of 17 reasons that masks are harmful, especially to children in the classroom all day. I'm not going over those, but I do realize that decisions can be made and followed and then changed again. So everything that I cover in this presentation, I'd be happy to share the websites with you. I'd be happy to have the entire information printed and sent to you. And these are not what you might consider or know of a trusted source. One of the sources was, of course, on masks, and there's a number of them. But the one I want to cover next is what can be done besides masking to keep our kids safe and healthy in the classroom. I know that Cape Public Schools has received large amounts of money. I'm not aware of the exact amount, and I would say that most stakeholders in this district would not be aware of the exact amount, and I will be asking for accounting of that money, where it came from, and also any criteria that might be necessary to fulfill in order to get that money.
Ma'am, your time is up.
My time is up?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I will get these things to you, but they are safety things that can be done, not just in a classroom, but other.
Again, I'd remind you, you have three minutes.
I spoke last month, and I'm here to kind of follow up on some of those points that we spoke about. As I'm speaking, I'm going to pass around a copy of a letter. If you could take one and pass it. What have you done since we were here last to really evaluate what we asked of you of the current policy that was put into play? What the current policy that was put into place shows us your lack of actually listening to what we brought before you. To use DHSS's adjustments is basically a scapegoat for you to pass over, actually considering what is best for our town. What is good for St. Louis and Kansas City is not necessarily what is best for Cape Girardeau. Have you reached out to the surrounding schools like Nell Holcomb, the letter I passed around to you, who have completely done away with close contact and quarantining? The new policy still continues to be discriminatory, and it has become even more medically invasive. For you to allow a vaccinated child to, we asked for mask and monitor. You're allowing a vaccinated child to mask-monitor, and you can still continue to go to all the activities. And if you want to test, you test on day one and day four. That is it. And if you test and you're fine, you're clear, you can take that mask off. For an unvaccinated child, you're going to make them continue to wear that mask for 14 days. They're not allowed to go to any extracurricular activities, and if they do want to go to extracurricular activities, they have to test three times. Not two, but three times. And they have to continue to wear that mask until they have gone through three tests, which I feel in seven days' span is too much testing for a healthy child. Masking and monitoring is simply wear the mask, monitor your symptoms. If you're sick, stay home. If you have symptoms come up, let's check it out. But we don't need to continue to separate vaccinated and unvaccinated kids. They are the same. Vaccines only promise that you are not maybe going to have as severe symptoms, and you're not going to be hospitalized. And we're seeing that people are being hospitalized from that. There is no guarantee with that vaccine. It has come out. There are enough reports of injury and illness of vaccinated people and unvaccinated. You've got to stop this discrimination. It is enough. Our kids need to be in school, learning, and not being separated because they've been vaccinated or unvaccinated. And then the other thing I brought before you was the quarantine policy and the education that the kids are receiving if they do quarantine. And I'm not going to have my healthy child test again if they are a close contact. It's not, I feel it's not necessary. So we might have to face quarantining again, and that means he's out of school again for seven, maybe 10 days. And what have you done to address the issue of lack of education while the child is quarantined at home? There needs to be a better way. We need to get back to educating our kids. I saw a report about the English testing or something. I don't have it in front of me, but it was pretty poor over the last two years of going through COVID, the results that we've seen in our kids. And I just, I want us, I want us to get back to focusing on educating our kids and stop trying to be medically invasive. Let us take our kids to the doctor. Let us handle the medical decisions. It's not your job to do that. The other thing is, is that the CDC is an arm-
Ma'am, your time is up. Again, I'll remind you, you have three minutes, please.
Thanks. I'm Kim Schwartz from Cape Girardeau, and I'm a grandmother of two children in the district. I'm not a domestic terrorist. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. However, the three minutes I have really won't allow me to cover the issue of critical race theory adequately. So I'll be passing out some questions later. I have given each of you a book titled Thought Lines by Vadi Bocum, and I think this black scholar, athlete, missionary, and pastor has much to say about the experiences and the issue of CRT. I'll let the story speak for itself from the book, but know this: His determined, single mother saved him from the system and the Marxist CRT ideologies being promoted to our children today by NSBA and NEA. We have parents like that here tonight who are determined to achieve their child's best interests and most excellence in learning. In August, my husband and I attended our first school board meeting with the intention of just being better citizens and voters. That night, we learned about the Canvas new software program. According to the presentation, the program offered parents more access and transparency to their child's education and curriculum, and you all seemed very comfortable and impressed with that. I left with a few questions. Did we receive a grant for this software? If so, who provided the grant? What did we give up to get it? And will DESI and NEA use Canvas to push down their favored ideologies such as CRT or trans de jour? Are parents being trained on the program as well? That night, after this meeting, right across the street at the Eagles, nationally recognized expert on CRT, Dr. Mary Byrne gave an outstanding presentation, and I'm sorry that you didn't take the opportunity to attend. I understand that you knew about it. She had some interesting examples regarding the Canvas program. She referred to a three-page email sent to teachers by the literacy and speech coordinator in the Rockwood District here in Missouri, which warned educators regarding trigger words not to use in the Canvas program when developing a lesson plan. The triggers to avoid might include racism, equity, transgender, diversity, white privilege, fluidity, and the list goes on. And then she offered substitute words to use instead so that parents could be, so that teachers could conceal the content of the children's education from the parents using the Canvas program. And I have a copy of all of this. You'd be welcome to. Quoting from the Wall Street Journal, "It's only a matter of time before diversity, equity, and inclusion parameters include vaccinations, boosters, and gender fluidity clauses. Meridocracy is out. Masks and blinders are here to stay." And the Wall Street Journal ends by saying, "Check your brain at the door or else be canceled." Thank you for the time.
Next this evening is Linda Rutzel. Rutzel?
Right. Thank you.
Just to remind you, you have three minutes.
Okay. Linda Reitzel, and I'm a proud alumnus of the Cape Girardeau Public School System. I'll continue with Kim, what she was talking about, the Canvas system. This offering of triggers to avoid and giving substitute language seems like a direct attempt to conceal the content of our children's education from their parents. This is a problem for me, and it should be a problem for you. Furthermore, Dr. Byrne demonstrated that if educators want to completely conceal their unit or any other resources or information, there is an ability to put it someplace where others cannot see it. Did you know this about the Canvas system? I would assume that a high percentage of parents in our district don't know about Canvas and would have no idea how to access any of it. The ones that do know about it don't know how to use it and are unaware of the hiding mechanism within. Citizens and parents of this district trust you, the board members, to look out for their children. Add all the other controversies with masking, vaccinating, quarantining, parental consent or not, is it any wonder that parents are at these meetings every month? I do believe that you have awakened a sleeping giant. These parents now realize that they must monitor what this bureaucracy is teaching their children, and you board members should actually welcome that. It's an awesome responsibility to direct the teaching of children, so you should always defer to the citizens as opposed to the teachers' unions and the administration. Board members represent the citizens and their children. You are our buffer between the administration and the unions. CRT, equity, and the socialist ideologies promote division and aggressive behaviors. There is no place for collective guilt, neo-segregation, or basing everything on race or gender. These ideologies violate our basic principles of equality and justice, and so division. They have been injected into the schools, the teacher training programs, and come as directives by teachers' unions. We need to go back to teaching excellence in reading, writing, arithmetic, science, civics, and such. Let's encourage patriotism to this country. Though it is not perfect, our Constitution, the Declaration of Independence, and the Bill of Rights are the envy of this world. Leave the moral teaching to the parents who absolutely have the right to shape their children's character, not you. I want to end this with, when the Department of Education was created in 1979, Congress used these words, and I quote, "Parents have the primary responsibility for the education of their children, and states, localities, and private institutions have the primary responsibility for supporting that parental role." So are you helping good parents to protect their children from the ugliness of this world? Are you listening to the parents of this community? That is your job, and I thank you for the time.
And lastly, this evening, Ms. Geneva Allen Patterson? And I'd just like to remind you, you have three minutes, please.
Okay. My name is Geneva Allen Patterson. I'd like to say to the board on behalf of the staff, we do appreciate the cost of living increase that you gave us. Just thinking about all the increases and everything now, we really do need that. But I rise to give applause to some of the hardest-working and dedicated employees in the state of Missouri, and that's the employees of the Cape Girardeau School District. As an employee, I hope that what I'm saying is not a conflict of interest, but it'll be viewed as I am a team player and advocate and cheerleader for employees. Hopefully, with research, that what I'm saying is authentic and it's not fake news. With only a few moments allowed, I just want to get to the issue that I want to bring forth to you. I won't name this name of the cities. I did have them down here, but I'm just going to say, the city in Missouri observed that teachers and support staff went through the 2020 and 2021, and they wanted to help them. It's also in the second city that I have listed here. They wanted to show appreciation for all the hard work that staff put in each week with our children, and it came down to two things. First, the added workload, and that's due to extreme shortage of employees. The second one is the added risk to staff due to the pandemic. With support of these city school boards, they pursued the idea of a one-time payment, and that payment was called a COVID-19 Relief Stifling- and that payment was called a COVID-19 relief stipend. That would be given to employees who have worked during the pandemic. This was granted, and stipends were given to full-time and to part-time employees in these cities. Although I know this is not the norm in Missouri, this did happen in some of the school districts in Missouri. State law, I know prohibits districts from giving bonuses, but it does allow a one-time payment or stipend when employees do extra work. These districts worked with their attorneys and with their auditors to make sure that the payments were allowed. I stand to request the expiration of a stipend program so that we can show appreciation to our employees who are wearing many hats and they're working many jobs. And the reason we're doing that is because we love our children. So as a woman of faith, I have faith in you, the board, to investigate and provide a timely response to this request. Thank you.
And that was all of the individuals that requested to speak before the board this evening. And again, I appreciate everybody coming out to, to address the board, especially when you have concerns, questions, requests, whatever. Everybody has the option to do that. We just ask that you do it at least three days prior to every meeting to get put on the agenda in that section. So we will move on to our next part of the agenda, which is our informational reports. First up is the board president's report. I just have three things to report on this evening. First being that next Wednesday, just to remind the board that we have our annual Missouri School Boards Association conference starting, and we'll be traveling up there on Wednesday evening through Saturday for our annual training. Always look forward to seeing what different school districts have to present to the different boards, so we can bring some of those ideas back here and implement them. Second thing this evening is, I'm sure you all received the email from Missouri School Board Association, the letter that was sent to the National School Board Association, basically informing them that Missouri School Boards Association is no longer associated with the NSBA. That is- So that is primarily due to the lack of support from the National School Board Association to allow local and state school boards to maintain their own individuality and to make their own decisions local. So Director Melissa Randall was instrumental in putting together that letter and making sure that they were very well aware of that. And let's see, the third item, so about a week and a half ago, I guess, we met, week and a half, almost two weeks ago, we met after the Department of Health and Senior Services, along with DESI, came together, and they put together some less restrictive guidelines for schools to implement locally, to allow fewer quarantined students, so we can keep children in schools, to be educated, which is our primary purpose, but also to keep them safe while they're in our custody. And so we put together kind of a one-page guideline on different options that students have, and I just wanted to go over those this evening, so since we're broadcasting this, thanks to the CTC and Mr. Randy McWilson. So the Cape Girardeau Public School Updated Guidance for Exposures and Quarantine in the School Setting. So if a student is fully vaccinated or is tested positive within the last 90 days, they are not quarantined, they stay in school, and they're allowed to participate in any extracurricular activities without masks. And there's two options for them to be allowed to do that. Option one is to be fully masked for 14 days in the school setting. And if symptoms occur, testing is required, or they can choose to quarantine at home if they choose not to test. Option two is no masking required, and they test on day one and four after exposure. And these tests will be done within the schools' buildings themselves. We are training individuals to do the, just around the end of the nose, the nasal swabs rather than the deep sinus swabs that have been done previously. And if a test result is positive, they must follow the isolation procedures as put in place prior. Now, if an unvaccinated or partially vaccinated individual comes in contact with somebody that is exposed or is positive, there is no quarantine, they can stay in school, and as long as they fully mask for 14 days within the school setting. There's two options to do that. One is not allowed to participate in extracurricular activities. So if they are unvaccinated and they have been exposed, and they choose not to wear a mask, then they're not allowed to participate in any extracurricular activities. If symptoms occur, then testing is required, or they need to quarantine at home as previous. And then option two is they can test three times while in school, days one, four, and seven after the exposure, but they are still allowed to participate in extracurricular activities without masks as long as they test negative. If they do test positive, then they must follow the isolation rules. So those are the four options that individuals have, whether they're quarantined, unquarantined, masked or unmasked. So there's plenty of options for students and parents to, to follow in order to allow students to remain in school. So just want to make sure that was clear to everybody.
May I ask one question? Is parental consent requested before the testing is given because on this document it's not community?
Yes, there will be a document sent out for all parents to consent to the testing. If they don't wish to allow their students to be tested, then there are obvious other options that they have to follow. But there will be consent from all parents. So that concludes my report. Next up, we have our superintendent's report with Dr. Glass.
Not a lot to report on, a couple of information items. Just a reminder, there's no school for students this coming Thursday or Friday. Thursday's Family Teacher Conference Day for pre-K through eighth grade. We do have Professional Development Day for ninth to 12th grade staff members. Then Friday is a PD day for all grade levels. FBLA will host a blood drive Tuesday, November 2nd, in the small gym at the high school. They're always on the move. Ms. Taylor does a wonderful job with the FBLA, and she's, she's always willing to help out wherever possible, and I know they're extremely low right now. Congratulations to the CHS Beta Club on a successful leadership summit where they qualified for Nationals in every challenge, which is exciting. And last but not least, we participated in the great shakeout, the National Earthquake Drill last week, and want to commend all our building staff and students for doing such a great job. It's important that we are, we are all ready for a natural disaster, and I think last night reminded us how prepared we need to be in case of a natural disaster. I know Frederick Town got hit a little bit, and so we need to keep them in our thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
Oh, one, one thing I forgot to add is this Friday, I believe the junior high is having a chili cook-off competition. And I believe several people within the district have agreed to be guinea pigs or judges. So it should be interesting to see what types of chilies there are, but anybody in the community that wants to come out and take a look, more than welcome. Next up, we have our program evaluations. This month, we have summer school and transportation. Those evaluations were sent out previously for everyone to take a look at. Did anyone have any questions regarding those? Next up is our academic services report.
We have nothing.
Nothing? Next is our instructional technology update. Mr. Russell?
All right. As you guys heard from me for the last few months, still working on Canvas. Our teachers, our students are doing crazy good things. So I just wanted to show you a few statistics that we finally was able to get. And so here, if I go full screen, you guys can see kind of all of the stuff that the teachers have, all of, all of the time and all of the lessons that the teachers have gone into, either taking things that they've had previously from their textbooks and stuff like that, or that they've had in Google Classroom or in Moodle. You can see that they are, just in these first few months, I mean, that's 400,000 here. And so just different things that the teachers have uploaded, different activities, whether it be a worksheet or a, you know, a book for students to read or whatever it is, different categories there. And then here at the bottom, you can see that the students are quite busy. And so these are every assignment that could have been turned in, stuff like that. And so you can see too, that we've got one building, it's going a little extra compared to where we expected. We have one building who's by themselves are one-sixth of all of Canvas, and that's the junior high. And so I want to give them a shout out, followed by the, by the high school. And just to be fair, a lot of the junior highs is one person. So they've gone, they've, they've actually built out their course for the entire year. And so, and, and started to try to get as much as they can, so that next year when school starts, they're ready to go. And so really excited about that. And, you know, the quality of things that they're putting on there is just amazing. A lot of, a lot of teachers had things previously in Moodle and in Google Classroom, and they're able to port a lot of that over and use it. And so some of this stuff is things that they've just moved over, but a lot of it is just, you know, things that they've made from scratch. We also have a tool, a new tool called Teacher Made that allows us to take, for example, our ELA for fifth and sixth grade, they've got a new ELA resource. And that resource doesn't have anything that can be used virtually. And so they're able to then take a worksheet from the company, upload it to this, and it'll help students get immediate feedback rather than having to wait for teachers to have to grade something and then hand it back. And so it's really fast, really easy, really simple for, for teachers to set up, and once it's set up, it's reusable. And so they've also been uploading those like crazy. And so it's really good to see that as well. And so any questions that you guys have about Canvas or anything else that we're doing? Just real quick, I am going to give you a preview, or kind of a heads up. We're, we're testing out right now a program that can, where, where students can take a reading passage, this is at the elementary level, and they can take a reading passage and it will, the, the student will be able to read it, it'll be able to time them and be able to, the teacher will be able to then go back and mark where they got things right and wrong on the text and give them immediate feedback on fluency instead of having to, you know, the teacher have to, you know, sit with every single student for every single time to do any kind of fluency checks. They can have multiple students sit at a table and do it together with headphones on, of course, so that they can't hear the other students and get it done. So it makes teachers' lives a whole lot easier. And so we're testing that out with a couple of teachers, and hopefully you guys will get to see a video of me trying it out on like a third grade level. So don't judge me too much next month.
The data that's being uploaded into the system, is it, how is it reviewed and make sure it's in line with what's in our, our curriculum that we approve annually?
Sure, so as, as we're, as we're still getting started, a lot of it is purely from the already-approved resources and curriculum that, you know, we've already adopted. For example, earlier this year, we adopted ELA resources. Those were the summer and this last year. The resources that we adopt, we go through and we lean what is expected from the Missouri Learning Standards and make sure that those apply, and then those things are used inside of Google Classroom or, or Canvas. And so all of it's aligned to, you know, board-approved curriculum.
Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Russell? Thank you for the update, and we look forward to seeing you on the video next month. All right, next up, we have our Community Teachers Association report. Whoever represents it, there should be. Good evening.
Hello.
How are you?
Good. I probably don't need the microphone, I talk to the lab. I am a CTA president. We got our numbers back, and we have 239 CTA MST members at Cape Girardeau Public Schools, which is really great because MST gives us that extra insurance for if we ever need it. This quarter, or semester, I should say, CTA gave money to each building to give them a fall support. This was for all staff members. You did not have to be an MST member or CTA member, and the building reps chose how they wanted to spend it. So like, for instance, at Central Academy, we each got a goodie bag with air freshener, which is always needed in your classroom, and candy and treats. So that was nice of our building reps. So every building got to do that, and they got to pick how they spent their money. We did decide to move our trivia night to be in the spring, just because we didn't want to have to rush through anything, because myself, I am new to being president, my vice president is also new to being on the board. So we just decided to stick with guessing the first snow day. So you will be getting an email about that soon. We sent out a survey to every staff member about their feelings and concerns of their building and of the school district, and it, it, it was good. And we met with our cabinet here, so Dr. Glass, Dr. Binion, Josh Crowell, and Mandy Keys. And it was really nice, we all found, or not results. Solutions to problems that really were more of, nobody brought them to attention, so now we're more aware, which was good. As always, I'm going to shout out to all the buildings. They're all great, but I'm just going to highlight a couple. CMS, their Tiger Lilies, which is like the Honorable Young Men's Club, has 77 girls, and they have a waiting list of 20, which I think is super great because that program does really well for the self-esteem of those young ladies. And then the high school, they had 16 students be selected for the SEMO All District Choir, which is great. That was 11th, or ninth through 12th grade. And their FBLA FCC LA did the Hunger Run at the home football game last Friday, and all, all their food donations went to the SEMO Food Bank. So it's great that our students are giving back to the community. But if you ever have any questions about CTA, MST, you are more than welcome to email me or reach out to your, the buildings that your children attend, to their administrators, and they can reach out to me. Thank you.
Thank you for that update. Appreciate it. Next up, we have our treasure and finance report. Ms. Dudek.
This report is for the month of September. I'll start with our general fund, which is our main operating fund. We started with the beginning fund balance of 11.3 million. Revenue's were just a little over 800,000. Expenses were 1.6 million and 1.5 million was transferred to the special revenue fund that covers teacher salaries, leaving us with the ending fund balance in the general fund of 8.8 million. Some other things that happened in September is the district makes its bond payments. So under the debt service fund, you'll see a little over a million of expenses. Those are interest payments on our bonds. And we also closed on our Series 2021 bond funds, so you'll see those now in the report. We have 4.3 million in that account for the Jefferson Project. The cash and investment detail is in the Super World. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you. Next, our support services report.
Good evening. Update on nutritional services. We are looking at finally solidifying a new partnership with some food supply companies due to us with 27 other districts having lost a wholesale provider that we had originally set up, going to US Foods, and we look to have that solidified by the middle of next month with building deliveries, which will then ease up some of the workload that we have had on our maintenance staff, our warehouse staff, and even our own cooks and managers coming here to the warehouse for their own deliveries and whatnot. So we're looking forward to that. We're still outsourcing several other facilities. We do like Sam's, Aldi, Schnucks, Walmart, Neighborhood Walmart, Food Foods, DFG, several other suppliers as well. But so far, we're still feeding kids every day, close to about 8,000 meals a day between breakfast and lunch, and we've been able to keep the quality of the product high. Construction updates. Two main projects that we have going right now, obviously the Jefferson Project and then the ball field at the high school. the ball field at the high school. We're running into a little bit of delays with steel delivery. That's a nationwide trend, but we're getting back on track with that. That hasn't slowed the projects down, where we've just shifted to other areas of those projects while we're waiting for the steel to be delivered. We haven't had any issues, knock on wood, with any type of conduit delivery, which is affecting a lot of projects, but it has not been affecting us now. So progress is still being made, and those projects are moving along on schedule. And you've already read the Transportation Report tonight. Other than that, I have nothing else to report unless you have questions, concerns, or comments.
Regarding the food contracts, are we having any difficulties in staying within the nutritional guidelines, or are they doing waivers in some of those?
That's a great question. So DESI and USDA have pushed out waivers since the beginning of the school year. Those waivers were also in effect last school year due to other shortage supplies, and those waivers have just continued. So we are currently within guidelines for any type of expectations that USDA or DESI would have.
Anyone else have any questions? Thank you for the update. Next up, we have our Board's Updates. MSBA Delegate Report.
That's me.
Yes.
We're just preparing for the Delegate Assembly at the MSBA Conference, so we have materials that we're looking through after the conference, then I'll kind of report on some of the bigger issues that we addressed.
Any questions for Dr. Fager, who's sitting by herself?
I was going to say, you're all alone.
Just realized.
Put the girl on the side.
Smartest one in the room. Legislative Report. Did you have anything from?
Casey's on there.
There you are. Are you going to report?
Yeah, no, no update.
All right. And anything from Cape Public School Foundation?
I don't have an official report, but I can talk about some stuff from the last meeting. The yearbook, that was kind of a big thing that we talked about at our last meeting. We also talked about some of the grants, and we're thinking about some new directions to focus on within the foundation. That's all pretty vague, but we're still in discussion stages on some of that stuff.
I do know the Penguin Party's Valentine's Day this year, isn't it? No?
I'll look it up, I'll tell you. 12. February 12.
Abraham Lincoln.
And we're going to do the, we did the virtual auction last year, and we're going to do that again. That worked really, really well.
Anything else? No? Any questions? All right, so we'll move on to non-action items. And... So non-action items are the first reading of, I believe we have four new board policies that are being updated. First one is Policy BBB, which is School Board Elections. This is changing the filing period, which, I don't know why they put it this way, but it begins the 17th Tuesday and ends the 14th Tuesday prior to the election. And DCB, which is Political Campaigns, just revises to reflect new language to clarify that school districts cannot use public funds to support or oppose a ballot measure, candidate or committee, per House Bill 271. Policy JHDE, which is in regards to behavioral risk assessments. It's a new policy for use by districts that have a behavioral health assessment program. The final one was KKB, which is Audio and Visual Recordings. House Bill 432 requires school districts to allow parents to record meetings held under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act or under Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973. This policy was revised to address the details of this new law. So that is the first reading of these policies, and next month, they will be brought back for second reading and final vote. Next up, we have Approval of Consentigen Items. There are two items on this area. Minutes of Previous Meeting, September 27, 2021. Two sets there, and October 14, 2021, and the payment of bills for this month, this past month. Do we have a motion to approve consent agenda items?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Glenn and Mr. Ritter. Any discussion on those two items? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Items are approved. Next up, we have Business Items of the Month. First up is a motion to adopt Board Policy JG-R1 as recommended by MSBA. JG-R1 is in regards to student discipline. This policy has been revised for consistency with Policy JG. Change reference to Policy JFH as it has been rescinded. Do we have a motion to adopt this policy?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Glenn, Mr. Ritter. Any discussion on that?
This policy is just keeping up with the times, basically adding vaping into our tobacco use disciplinary pause.
Does anyone have any questions? Hearing none, all in favor of this policy, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Policy is adopted. Next up is a motion to authorize a superintendent to negotiate and execute a contract on behalf of the Board with Mutual of Omaha as the term life insurance carrier effective January 1, 2022. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Glenn, Mr. Ritter. Dr. Glass.
Yeah, I have with us tonight Mr. Tom Beers, our broker with Sonus Benefits. He is in charge of sending out the RFP that brings back proposals for our life, our vision, and also our FSA accounts for the district. Always looks for the best deal for the district, and if there's changes happening, he always consults with our HR department and makes sure that we're comfortable with those changes and looks out for our benefit, our employees' benefit. So if you have any specific questions, Tom's here to answer those, but I think it's pretty much straightforward for the best deal.
Anyone have any question for Mr. Beers? Thank you for coming this evening. Right, so the motion on the floor is to authorize a superintendent to negotiate and execute a contract on behalf of the Board with Mutual of Omaha as the term life insurance carrier effective January 1, 2022. There's no further discussion, questions, or comments? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Next up is a motion to authorize a superintendent to negotiate and execute a contract on behalf of the Board with Mutual of Omaha for vision insurance effective January 1, 2022. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Glenn, Mr. Ritter. Dr. Glass? Anything?
No, vision insurance is voluntary on the employee benefit side, so again, we just look out for the employee's best interest and try to find the best policy out there.
Okay, so the motion is to authorize the superintendent to negotiate and execute a contract on behalf of the Board with Mutual of Omaha for vision insurance effective January 1, 2022. There's no further discussion, comments, discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. And lastly, in this group, is a motion to authorize a superintendent to negotiate and execute a contract on behalf of the Board with Mutual of Omaha for administration of flexible spending accounts effective January 1, 2022. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Glenn, Mr. Ritter. Discussion? Dr. Glass?
Again, this is another voluntary benefit. The district doesn't spend any money with the FSAs.
No further comments, discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Next up is a motion to authorize a superintendent or his designee to execute a change order on behalf of the Board with ATG in the amount of $150,000 for installation of used turf on the CHS Band Practice Field. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Glenn, Mr. Ritter. Dr. Glass.
Mr. Crowell's been working on that, so I'll turn that over to him.
So, as you are aware, we have had our, what are called old field turf waiting and being stored to eventually get it reinstalled in the band practice field marching area that will give them a place with implement weather, they'd still be able to practice, participate, and work on their drills and their routines. And so this is the motion. Before you do, we have ATG already on site. Costs are extremely low because they'll not have to remobilize, and the work can continue to keep going. Benefit of having of doing this as well, too, it fits into our master plan for our outdoor facilities that was given to you all a few years ago. We'd be able to use this area outside of the marching band season for other sports that are taking place, to eat classes, help save the wear and tear on our current stadium field, and also our baseball softball. So the motion is for you.
Did they give the indication on how long the repurposed turf will last?
That's a very good question. That was one of the questions I asked, too. They're thinking we can get another 10 years out of it because it'll have all-new infill put in it when it comes in. They're repairing and patching it as it gets put down, so any tears that are in it. They made great links to make sure that they didn't just rip it up like old carpeting when it was uninstalled from our stadium, and that they knew we were going to have a purpose for it in the future. So it'll be repaired, it'll have new infill in it, and we should get quite a bit of life expectancy out of it.
Now, is this the turf that was replaced due to the insurance?
Yes.
Okay. So it's really...
Yeah.
It's not costing really anything, so...
We're paying for labor.
The labor, right.
Okay, so the motion is to authorize a superintendent or his designee to execute a change order on behalf of the Board with ATG in the amount of $150,000 for installation of used turf at the CHS Band Practice Field. Any further discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Sure, the band parents and the band members themselves will be very appreciative of that, so they don't get all muddy.
It'll be a great district resource.
And the last piece of business this evening is a motion to authorize a superintendent or his designee to negotiate a contract on behalf of the Board with TKE for the refurbishment and repair of the CAO elevator at a cost of $79,750. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Glenn, Mr. Ritter. Dr. Glass?
Yeah, we've got a great alternative to bring our elevator that's just right outside these doors up to speed without having to do a total replacement in the tune of a quarter million dollars. So I feel like Mr. Crowell's done a great job going out and trying to look for an alternative that's much, much less than that. Mr. Crowell?
Basically, given the gist of it, TKE is Tyson Crump. If you've heard of that company before. We reached out to multiple companies. Tyson Crump came back with the best option for us that we feel is a good fit for the district. This will completely modernize the elevator. They don't even make replacement parts for the current elevator that we have. We couldn't even buy them on eBay. I'm being serious about that. We've tried every different way to keep that repaired, and we're just unable to do it at this time.
Will this new elevator run when it's really, really cold out?
Yes. Just added information, since we are updating it, there are new state guidelines and laws that come into how that room needs to be kept. So within this cause, we're having a small heating and air conditioning unit putting in, put into that operating room. There'll be new fire-rated sheet rock that goes in around it to protect the electrical components. It'll also tie into our fire system, so if the alarm goes off, elevator drops to the first floor, doors open, and it becomes inoperable until a fireman were to hit it with a service key. So it'll be up to current code.
Jared, you laugh, but when it got really cold, that elevator would not go up or down, and poor Beth had to carry stuff upstairs. That's why we had all of our meetings upstairs, and in the wintertime, it was horrible. And then you didn't know once you got in if you could get out. That was the other problem. So this is great. So the motion is to authorize the superintendent or his designee to negotiate a contract on behalf of the Board with TKE for the refurbishment and repair of the CAO elevator at a cost of $79,750. There's no further discussion, questions, comments? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. And that concludes our business for the evening. Next up, we have anything from the Board? The good of the Board, informations, proposals? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Jeff and Jared, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.